I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recording in progress.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the city council meeting, November 3, 2025. With that, if we could have Rob Paul, please.
Luther.
Here.
Crowe.
Here.
Sutherland.
Yep.
Yanko.
Here.
Pickard.
Here.
Schwabs.
Here.
Gents.
Here.
Solberg.
Here.
Brennan.
Here.
Erdman.
Here.
Sommerfeld.
Here.
Great. With that, if we have approval of minutes, if anybody would like to make a motion to approve the minutes, we could do so at this time. Ryland?
Yep, I'd make a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Thank you. Is there a second to Ryland's motion? Randy?
I'll second Ryland's motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any corrections? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Post. Thank you. Moving on to public comments. Public comments is a portion of our meeting where anybody can come up to the podium three minutes or less on agenda items only. We do keep a pretty tight reign on the time. Again, please give us your name and your address and push the button down. Make sure the microphone is on when you speak. So at this time, we'll open up public comments. Please come forward.
Hi, everyone. Becca Schoen, born 27, 21, Nelson Drive. I'm the director of downtown Menominee. Today on the agenda, we have today's parade event permit. So this year, we have our parade on Thursday, December 11. We are hoping to have the live reindeer come back, and this year they are being trained to pull Santa in the parade even. So we have some new exciting things up our sleeve this year, but same as usual, a fun holiday event with wagon rides, live animals, and then our holiday parade, which is a tropical theme this year.
Becca, what time does that start on December 11, or November, December 11th? What time?
Four o'clock, and then the parade starts at 6:30.
6:30, four o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you push your microphone on? There you go.
Hi, Molly Meridian, executive director of the Bridge to Hope, 2110 Fourth Avenue Northeast. I am here for new business item B for the rezoning. We're requesting that the Bridge to Hope property on Fourth Avenue Northeast be rezoned from R2 to R3 to accommodate a very exciting solar project that we're looking at that would reduce our overhead and move more money to survivors. And I am available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Molly.
Tina Lee, I technically live in the town of Menominee, but I'm a member of an organization called Grow, our grassroots organizing of western Wisconsin, and I'm deeply committed to the city of Menominee, where my children live and where I teach at Stout. So I am here to speak on agenda item number seven, the mayor's report. So would all of you who are here with me from Grow, please stand and remain standing? So we're here tonight with the same message. The city council is ready to vote on the shield ordinance, and we want it on the city council agenda this November. Council members have been expressing a desire to have this on the agenda for a vote since this summer. It's now November, still hasn't happened. The housing committee is ready to vote to recommend the ordinance to city council, but concerns have been raised that the staff preparation time needed to make this happen is being put on the back burner. Enough is enough. Mr. Mayor, we understand that staff work under your direction and guidance.
Ma'am, this matter isn't on the agenda.
It's about the mayor's report, which is on the agenda. It's also about budget item 4A. Can I continue?
It's going under the realm of the budget. You would have to make sure you're speaking about that. Under mayor's report, though, no, it would not be included.
You can continue. Well, I'm going to allow it under 4A.
Okay, thank you. So we understand staff work under your direction and guidance, Mr. Mayor, and so we're hoping that you will be willing to discuss today what you're doing to assure, ensure that the proposed shield ordinance will be ready to be sent to the full council at the November 11th Housing Committee meeting. Thanks for your time.
Okay, thank you, Tina.
Hello, my name is Nicole Manson. I'm an organizer with Grow, and I live at 309 12 Streets, Wisconsin. I am speaking tonight as well about the Grow Shield Ordinance, and I am also speaking on the item number 4A for the budget. Because the budget is being discussed and the Grow Shield Ordinance would require a little budget increase, this will need to be included in the budget discussion. So that is what my question is tonight, is to make sure that the city council considers the shield ordinance to be added to the budget for this next cycle's consideration. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Nicole. Public comment is open. If anybody would like to come forward.
Good evening. My name is Harvey Weidman, and I'm the shelter manager at the Dunn County Humane Society, which operates at 302 Brickyard Road, Menominee. And I'm here to be of assistance tonight as you would discuss our contract, proposed contract for 2026. So I'll be here for any questions if you have them. Thank you.
Thank you, Harvey. Public comment is open. If anybody would like to come forward. Last call for public comments. Okay, we're going to close public comments, move on with the rest of our meeting. Under old business, a review of the 2025 draft general fund budget. There's a lot of information tonight in your packets. We did go through, there's not a lot of changes, line item changes, not a lot. We did have a couple of major expenses come through, the three firefighters and some other things. But I think I'm going to turn this over to Eric because he's had his thumb on it for a number of weeks, and we can kind of go through it. Eric?
Yeah, sure. Thank you, Mayor. So also in front of you here today related to the budget is I handed out three different chart of accounts for items that had a couple of changes. One was including the humane society's updated contract expense. So population had increased a little bit, so they're going to be receiving additional funds for that. And we're required to have humane society services. So that's something that we handle each year. We also, under information technology, had a slight increase in expenses for multi-factor authentication. It's needed that we'll have to have to preserve insurance and prevent certainly cyber attacks, which have been happening more frequently. Thankfully, we have not been impacted by those directly. And then the other one is elections. So I unfortunately underestimated the expense for payroll for the election workers. We have four elections next year. Now, we have the major midterms and certainly expecting primaries. So we're going to have an increased expense on that. So I did update that chart of accounts as well to make sure that we had funds there to pay our poll workers because we definitely want to pay them the efforts that they they go through.
Couple of other things too, you want to touch on the cost of living expenses and the the cost with the police and fire and how we manage that. So if you could touch on that a little bit?
Sure. So included inside of the the budget when it comes to the wages, for general employees, it was listed at 3%, and that was already factored into the budget that was created before you. The reason 3% was chosen is we already have union agreements that are in place to pay the majority of the unions, 3% in 2026. We wanted to keep in line with that number, as well as the Consumer Price Index for September had listed increase or the cost of living of about 3%. So that aligns with what we were looking at, and that was the reason for that particular number being chosen.
Okay, good. And then I guess I would ask you then also on the the rate of the debt service, and I guess before we get to that, the 2.1% new construction and how that plays in to the to the to the levy?
Sure. In the mid 2000s, the state changed the way municipalities can levy taxes. They had created a levy limit system. So at that time, states, municipalities could raise their levy based on net new construction or a percentage of about 2%. In 2012, the state changed that again, and they removed the minimum 2% and then just regulated it to net new construction. This year, we had a net new construction reported at 2.1%, which is higher than what we had the previous year. Previous year I looked was about 1.05, which is closer to what our normal percentage is. So based on our levy, that doesn't, still doesn't give us a whole lot of wiggle room. One of the advantages that did come out is that our assessed value for the community actually increased for the first time in four years. For the past four years, we've seen our assessed values actually decrease, but this time it increased by 15 million, which is not a, you'd think that that's a considerable sum of money. But how we calculate on mill rates and revenues, that equates to about an additional $100,000 of revenue. So it doesn't quite get us to where we would like to be, even with the net new construction of 2.1%, which that would net us around $120,000 of revenue. So that gives us about 220 overall that we can utilize.
Did we get anything from the expenditure restraint program?
We did not. We do not qualify for the expenditure restraint program because our, what we would call in our formula for mill rate, the interim rate is less than five mils. And so our interim rate right now is approximately 4.9 mils. So we are below that number. We would actually have to raise taxes to qualify for the expenditure restraint program to get a $50,000 payment, which is approximately what it is. And in the amount of money we would raise is as close to a half a million beyond just to make what we would need. So it really doesn't equate for our taxpayers right now to be able to do something like that. We're hoping that there's going to be legislative reform when it comes to the expenditure restraint program. So that way, our municipality, along with others, can qualify for that fund because I would argue that we've done a very good job at restraining our expenses because we're actually lower.
Good. I got about three more questions for you, Eric, and I, pretty much in layman's terms, if you could get explanations in the layman's terms. We are about 600, give us about 600,000 short in our budget cycle this year?
Well, we're hoping for, yeah, well, yeah, to put it this way, it is about 600,000, and that would give us, if we had 600,000, not only cover our expenses, but give us $250,000 in contingency, which is the number that we normally strive for.
Okay, so you mentioned contingency. How did we do on our contingency fund this year?
So so far in 2025, we've done quite well in contingencies. So we have $211,000 out of our 250,000 that was allocated by the city council last year. I would attribute that to our new ERP software that we have that does our accounting. Our department heads have been able to see what their budgets are and manage their funds quite wisely. And then all three, they've been able to use intra-fund transfers. So because they know and understand their budgets more effectively now, they're tapping into the contingency fund as much. They're able to look and forecast in the year as to whether or not they need certain funds in a line item and then are able to transfer funds that they wouldn't use into another line item within their chart of accounts to cover expenses without going to contingency.
That's pretty amazing that they were able to conserve 211,000 out of 250. I've seen it where we have bottomed the contingency fund out buying a new pump or a motor or some emergency piece of equipment or something like that. The $600,000 short, does that include the three new firefighters?
It does. That is, that is our largest expense. Of course, personnel. Just to be honest, these are just our largest costs. Because if you're looking at adding three, and I did put that in there, and that's included within that budget, that's looking at about $110,000 per individual, and that includes salary, benefits, insurance, retirement, FICA, all of those things that we contribute, group term life insurance, you name it. So those are those expenses.
Two more questions for you. So our 2.1% net new construction and the levy limits are all playing in. How does levering our debt service to help you in in calculating this?
Sure. So debt service does play a part in us being able to leverage our net new construction and be able to handle our levy limits. So taking on debt allows us to not have that counted against us in our overall levy. So I know that there are some communities, and you should be concerned about how much debt you take on because usually when you borrow, you're promising to pay that first out of the levy. So you want to be cautious as to how much you do borrow. The advantage, though, of having borrowing is that you can utilize that to help me make your ends meet when it comes to meeting the legal requirements for levy limits. And so we leverage some of our debt service to be able to do that in those payments.
Few years ago, quite a while ago, it was, our debt service was about 34 million, and I think our cap is around 90. What's our debt cap that we can borrow up to?
It's roughly 98 million, and our debt service is at about 26 million.
Okay, so we're in good shape that way.
We are.
All right. Anything else that I can add to that? I guess, I guess we can open it up for questions. Ryland?
On the topic of the debt that the city has, I know I asked a number of years ago, you know, why we don't just have a savings account with, you know, $6 million for that street project and, you know, however much for a new fire truck and, you know, the however much that the police department wants for a new police station. But could you?
I can answer part of that.
Explain again why, you know, like
if it was you and I.
Personally, I try to have, you know,
Little debt.
For, you know, enough money in my savings account that I can, you know,
Pay it.
Put a new transmission in the car if it goes out. Why, what keeps the city from being able to, say, have
I can answer part of that.
Lump sum just sitting around just in case.
I can answer part of that. I know Dave and I had this discussion a few weeks back. I think Durand does it this way, and they have to save up for a number of years, and all of a sudden, boom, they got a project that wipes them out, and we would have to increase our taxes quite a bit and and maintain a big balance and then, you know, release that balance and do a project. Whereas we're borrowing money for 2% and under. But if we were to have to save up for like the Public Works that we spent like $6 million on, now it'd be over $14 million. So carrying some debt at 2% is actually pretty, pretty good money compared to charging exorbitant taxes and then storing that money and trying to pay off a debt. I think that's my simplified version of that. I don't know if you can elaborate or if Dave, if you want to touch on that. But I think that's my explanation of that. David?
Yeah, I think for like, let's say a street project, Ryland, use that as an example, certainly the last decade or so, inflation has outstripped the interest that we pay on our debt. And so if we were to hold, let's say we started to try to put money away for five years in order to spend for Pine Avenue, we would be paying significantly more at the end of that period than we would have saved from not taking out debt for that. So I think, now, that's not always the case, but certainly the last decade or so that inflation has been quite high.
We've come down in our debt load quite a bit. I mean, it was 34, 36 million when I was, came the first year, and I think now we're down to 24. So we're trying to pay it down. But maintaining that, and like Eric said, when we have a capacity of 98 million and we're only carrying 24, that doesn't really hurt us. In fact, it helps us in some respects.
Because how much interest per year are we paying on that?
Well, yeah, there's a, there's a significant amount of interest, but if you weigh the interest amount at 1.6 to 2.2% versus inflation, we're still ahead of the game. So unless, you know, you win the lottery, that would be, that'd be one way to handle it. Matt, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I got two questions. We're $600,000 short. Does that include what we think revenue, state revenue sharing is going to be, or does it have no revenue sharing at all?
That is including what we think revenue sharing will be. Now, I'm still waiting on some of the state numbers. So sometimes they'll give you, well, I should say, they'll give you preliminary estimates. And sometimes the estimates are are lower than what they actually are. So I'm, I'm trying to be optimistic and hoping that the revenues actually come in slightly higher. One of the the revenue ones that sticks out in my mind is that we receive a transportation aid to help fix roads. And so the preliminary estimate for that was a little over $1 million. And that would be a reduction of about $20, $30,000 from what we had the previous year. So I'm hoping the formula that they used is just premature based on the numbers for people traveling and whatnot that the state uses and actually either restores it to what the level they had and that we received this year or in other years where it's actually a little bit higher because I, I don't believe the cost of our roads have declined. And if we look at our Pine Avenue project, you saw that that is about a $1.6 million project. That $1 million in state aid wouldn't even cover that particular project. And hopefully it'll be higher.
Just to be clear, too, when we say we're short, that is looking at last year's tax levy.
Yes.
At 6.6 mil rate. We can make that up by increasing the taxes slightly, but we can't increase taxes so much that because we've got the, you know, the 2% new construction cap on us. So we could go to about a 6.6 to a 7.2, about 0.6 mils. That'd be about max, and that would cover our 600,000 basically. It's about 100,000 per mil, 130,000, something like that. So that, so we're, what we're, what I'm saying is when we look at last year's mil rate, if we were to apply that to this year's budget, we're about 600 short, in layman's terms.
That's right.
Yep, you're correct. Debt services, that's just the debt that we're looking at paying off. It looks like it's about 590,000 more than the previous year. And there's things from, you know, 52417 and 4120, and just can you explain why there's a 590,000 difference between 26 and what's, and the current budget?
Yes, because that really depends upon what the principal and then the interest is, and then also what we borrowed for in the past. So we'll see at times, depending on what we did with either notes or bonds that we took out, may start to have balloon payments, or we may have a period where it goes higher. And then we look at either refinancing at that time, if there's other options that are available, we'd bring before council. We've also seen the need to have to increase the amount of money that we're borrowing in order to be able to basically Band-Aid the stuff that we have, whether that's equipment or doing road projects. So I, I see that number being more of the norm than close to the 2 million, but for for budgeting, I really wish it would stay around the 2, $2 million mark.
Right, um.
Good question.
Ryland's got his hand up. Go ahead.
Um, I know there's a lot of the assumption that, you know, departments, you know, you get your your budget, and if at the end of the year it's not spent, you lose it. And so you have to spend what you're budgeted. Otherwise, it's going to shrink. How much of a reality is that? Because I guess the example that people keep bringing up to me is Menominee has some of the shiniest newest police cars they see in any community. And we do seem to replace them fairly frequently while the fire department, you know, sends their fire truck back to the manufacturer to get the frame replaced on it or the parks department after 40 years finally replaces a vehicle. How how closely are we looking at each department and going, okay, do you really need to, do you really need to replace that? Or can you fix the part that's worn out on, you know, put a new seat in the squad car so it feels like a new car again and keep it on the road for another two years? Because it's barely out of warranty. You know, how closely are we looking at each department and?
I'll touch on it, and I'll turn it over to Eric. But first off, we don't live by the rule that if you don't spend it, you lose it. That doesn't the case. And I'll tell you what, the new software package that that was put into place is going to save tons of money because the departments have been really cognizant, and hats off to all the city employees for for being really cognizant of how much money is available and if they can transfer funds internally to pick up some of those costs, like a new seat in a squad car or whatever. The other thing that we have to be careful of, especially certain pieces of equipment, squads or fire trucks and ambulances. If, if they break down in the middle of a run, an ambulance, for instance, or a fire truck, or something happens on a squad. And so years ago, I know that we had a pretty lengthy discussion on rotating equipment. And so there's kind of been a, let's, let's get the resale as much as we can out of it and still replace it because the new squads, you know, there's a, there's a pretty good deal that the dealers give us. And so I don't know if it's state or federal, but, and I know the chief is here if he needs to talk about it. But I know the squads are kept clean and they're in good shape, and the, and the new washout bay down at the Public Works is amazing to get the salt off those things and keep them fresh. So I think there's some trade off there, and exactly what you're saying is we use them up, but we want to get rid of them while they're still a good resale and keep our fleet in good shape, especially the ambulances and fire trucks, because there's a certain candor there that we need to keep. I guess that's my layman's terms of it. I don't know. Eric, you were the police chief for a long time. Do you have anything to elaborate on that?
Sure. Yeah. So over, over the years, and you bring up some good points, Ryland, where the police department had reduced the number of squad cars that they were buying. Normally, it was on like a four and a five rotation, and then it went down to two and a three. And part of that was just the rising cost. One of the drawbacks was, of course, then you had more issues and more frequent repairs. The other thing that you run into in the difference between the police squad cars and the fire trucks is if we're replacing a ladder truck, that's $1.2 million versus $45,000 for a car. Or an ambulance chief is here, and I could be speaking wrong, but that could be $350, $400,000 when it's all said and done. So it's, it just kind of depends on what the equipment or the item is. And you might be even thinking of like with plow trucks. So we'll have a plow truck that might last 15 years or 20 years. So it just kind of depends on the piece of equipment, how it's being utilized. To get to the question about the use it or lose it, that, that's, that's been around for a long time as far as that, that kind of thought or the mindset or thinking that that's the way government operates. Here for my time working here in the last 13 years is that we typically freeze spending when it comes to about mid-November, and then through the remainder of the year. We do that for a couple of reasons because then we don't want to have to blow out budgets or create some kind of mad spending spree if we need to at the end. But also because we're trying to close out books and have them ready for auditing purposes. Plus, our budget gets established before the end of the year. So it's at least I, I feel this way is that when I was a department head, I didn't feel that I had to hurry up and spend, spend my money. And I knew that if I managed it well, it would work out in the end. So I don't feel like our department heads have to do that. If they would, I think we would have our contingency depleted. I, I think we'd have some other issues. I, I think that's a great question to ask and and bring up because certainly that mindset is around.
I think it was about 2012 that that, we eliminated that mindset. And so it was early on in the 2012, 2013 that, no, you don't, you're not going to lose it if you don't, if you don't spend it.
Right.
So it's been changed, and we don't operate under that mindset at all. There was one other thing that point that I was going to bring up a little bit is, you know, if we get ourselves into a stickler, if we could, if we could funnel in on this budget the way it is, if we had to dip into the contingency, we can. The other thing I wanted to mention is the subsidies. And Eric, I know that we had talked about subsidies, it's been three, four weeks ago now. And you have a new program lined up to handle some of the subsidies, more of a grant style program. But what was the dollar amount that we were looking at subsidies before, and what are we now looking at allocating through a grant program?
Well, so when you, when we were doing the subsidies in our old method, between general fund expenses and tid fund expenses, we were looking at potentially expending upwards of $300,000. It was not unusual to be in that $260,000 range. So included in this, this budget on the general fund portion, does include the tax increment district funds, we'll do that on the 17th. But on the general fund one, you will see a $50,000 increase. And they originally put that into, into like celebrations or entertainment. Thinking about that, we probably should actually move that into a line item under the council chart of accounts because it really is a council grant when you think of it. So having that $50,000 there, if you choose to continue with that, that is a considerable cost savings that comes. And if we would have been doing it the old way, and frankly, I don't blame any one of the groups that received a subsidy payment, knowing where some of them sit at on grants that they received or federal funding, I'm sure that they would have came back and asked for considerably more money than what they had before. And I wouldn't have blamed them for doing it because they have the same kind of issues we do, limited funds coming in. And, and having that at that $50,000 is, is a great savings for us.
So way I look at it is, I think Eric's done a terrific job, and Dave's done a great job. All of the department heads have contributed to the budget cycling this year. We don't have anything that's really outlandish. The, the big cost would be the 3% cost of living adjustment, the three firefighters. Other than that, everything else is pretty stable. We did take the subsidy down a couple hundred thousand dollars that, that helped. But we're not out of the woods. If we want to keep this budget as it is, we're going to be looking at a tax increase of about six mils, 0.6 mils, I should say, which would bring us up to about a 7.2 versus a 6.6. But that would be pretty much it. That would max us out as much as we could at this point with our 2.1% net new construction. So I know that people are here and people are looking at, hey, we need this program. We need that program. We need other things happening in the city. It may not be in this year's cycle, budget cycle. Now, when the city does a re-evaluation of properties and so forth and so on in the future, that could be something. There would be, if we can come out of this budget with a $250,000 contingency fund. Now those contingency funds later on in the year could be cycled through for other projects or other things. So there is that. And that could be a movement too. And I see a couple of hands. Sydney, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I'm sure Eric, you've done your best with this budget. My question is without raising taxes and keeping those three firefighters and possibly adding a building inspector, what departments and areas could we look to cut? And like, I know there are some services here that we need to fund, but where is the leeway going to be?
You would have to lay people off.
Okay.
Matt?
You mentioned the contingency fund. Where are we at on the fund balance? And where do we need to be there for the, helping our credit rating? And what was our policy, 15% or something like that? What we just added last year?
I'm gonna let Eric, he's fresh on this. I, it's been a few weeks.
Sure. So fund balance on our 2024 is going to be roughly around 2.8 million dollars, 2.7 million dollars. So is it where we would like it to be? No, not quite. Cause we want to, our goal is to have about 20% of what our actual expenses are. So we're, we're not there. Part of, part of the reason why we want to be careful with contingency fund is because we don't know what we don't know. Something could happen. We'd have to make an, you know, unplanned purchase or expense. The other part too, is that what's left over if we come in under budget, which is why, you know, kind of gets to Ryland's piece where we try to encourage people to be mindful of their money. And I think that the managers and department heads have been is that if we do come in under budget, that's money that will go into a fund balance to try to build it up and to try to get our credit rating up. And we talked a little bit about credit ratings during borrowing. We're at an A plus right now and we're trying to get to a double A minus. And there was a study a handful of years out about, you know, what percentage municipalities are at. And we're in the bottom 30% for a credit rating. Cause we don't have quite that fund balance. We don't have the economic growth that we need to be able to get that up. So we want to be mindful about those expenses too, so that way we can try to have some of that savings. But on the, on the flip side of that, as well as building up the fund balance, I think this council and past councils certainly have been cognizant about trying not to raise taxes. One, beyond what the levy limits are, because that's just state statute. But then also the other part is that, that those are real dollars that people are having to pay in. And so, yeah, we could get there faster if we, we max things out, but also we don't want to overburden our community. It's a tough balance. I'm sorry.
No, 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 that's fine. I didn't mean to interrupt. The other thing that does cut down a little bit on our credit rating is, you know, we have a lot of stout students here and it puts us into the poverty level more so. Because they're not, you know, they, they take up per capita and then they take an income and, and that just cuts down. So it's great having the university here. It's great having the students here. They add so much to our city. But when it comes to that piece of the city, it does actually hurt us. I don't know if you can elaborate, but.
Yeah. Part of it is based on what the average income is, poverty levels are impacted on it. And, and for all that you were in college and like I was, I was broke. And, and they are too. They just don't, they just don't make the money. And then if they fill out the census, which we do want them to do the census, because the population does matter and grants and other formulas. When they're accurately filling it out, and if you got a part-time job and you're making 10,000 a year or whatever it may be. Yeah, that does, that does hurt a little bit. And that's part of the other reason why we get additional shared revenues too. So I mean, that, that does play a part. But when you're a credit bureau, credit rating system, they're going to look at, well, what's, what's the, what's the growth in the community, both on like a construction wise? What is the overall income in a community? What do you have for fund balance? Do you have policies in place to have internal controls? What, what are, what are you doing as an overall, overall organization to try to improve your financial standing? So that is a challenge. I would never want to see the college students going away because we've seen how that has impacted us when the university closed. That really had a negative economic impact. They, they add a tremendous amount to the community. The university.
And the kids generally are very respectful. We've got great kids here, Menominee. Go ahead, Gretchen.
I want to, I want to jump in right there because I want to first, I know it wasn't intended, but dispel the myth that the university students are all the poverty in town. And with that being said, right now with food being a major issue, housing is also very urgent. And, and then going with housing is, you know, the firefighters that, and EMTs with health and all that. And I think the firefighters and the initiatives and ordinance changes to help with the housing situation. Waiting a whole year is, is not going to work. It's, it's, we're getting pretty dire. Those are pretty crucial needs. So I, I understand the limitations and, and what, what we're dealing with financially. But I, I want, I want us to keep it on our radar all year and get creative and not wait until the next budget cycle before we're dealing with these issues. I mean, it's, it's, it's becoming pretty crucial as, as shown. It, it, people are coming up with solutions and just keep it on the docket as much as we possibly can.
I'm going to touch on that just a little bit. I think that there's been a lot of good dialogue. I think Shield and Grow has brought some good ideas forward. I think if we could take some of those good ideas and implement them and work forward to a bigger goal, might be the way that we have to do it. Not that maybe that's, you know, the perfect solution. But I think some of these elements that they brought forward are stuff, are things that we can implement immediately going forward and work up to a bigger picture. I know that sometimes emergency situations, three firefighters, for instance, that seemed like be a pretty much an emergency situation. And so it's not that we want to turn a blind eye. We're not doing that. We are moving forward and we're taking information that's given to us and we're implementing it and moving it forward the best we can. But sometimes it takes a while. You can't just land everything at once.
Yeah. I mean, we understand how long things take, having been on, on the council for a while. But the, the point is, is that keeping it on the docket and keep talking about it and keep working on it actively as a priority. Housing, but also the firefighter, I mean, three was a stopgap and they, that's also a crucial need. So not, not, you know, stepping back on any, any of those issues throughout this year and really putting our efforts in on those critical needs.
Right. No, and you made good points.
And one of the things I was going to mention to, to all of you here as we have this discussion and, and past councils have done this too. So depending upon where you sit at financially as a budget and what you end up passing, doesn't necessarily mean it has to lock you in for the next year. And, and where I'm going with it is that we've seen adjustments made into a future cycle. So let's say you're, you're into 2026 and we find that we're able to have an efficiency in an area that we didn't think we were going to have before, it may free up certain funds that then makes it available to be able to do changes, either shifting funds to another department or an area to enhance services or expand services. We, we've, we've done that certainly when I was a department head here. And we've also done that as a, as an administrator. So even if it doesn't necessarily get funded now, it doesn't mean that going into 2026 where we make some changes, we find that we can utilize those funds. So it's just something to keep in the back of your mind that I've seen this council successfully navigate that in the past years.
Right. And I know there's contracts we should be looking at and we kind of froze those. We're looking at a solid year this year, just maintaining with what we've got and moving everybody forward. But I think that's still, we are still going to be about $600,000 short. You know, the, and but we, but again, Eric doesn't have all the numbers back, doesn't have all the finances back from the states and so forth. So that number could change. So until the next city council meeting, this is just kind of the a balancing point, but this is kind of where we're heading. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Speaking back on the Shield and Grow and seeing how we can implement what the housing committee has introduced, what pieces would you like to implement? Because Mayor, you keep saying that maybe we could take some of the pieces from there. What pieces are you looking to implement so we can talk about in the budget?
Well, I think that anything that's palatable without having to hire.
What, what, like what's tangible? Like, can you give a list for us and all the people in the crowd? Because right now you just keep saying principles and items and you're not being specific with us.
Well, I think more inspections through our inspection office. I think we can acquire that. I think we can handle that. I think that if you talk to the, the fire chief and ask them what they're capable of and on their off times, they could help out and do some of those inspections. So there's that. We've been talking about this, Sydney, but I don't have an actual, we can do this, we can do that, we can do this and that. But we are looking at more inspections. There's some other avenues too on, maybe we could do something along the lines of putting a program together to, to help offset some of the costs that some of the homeowners might have. For instance, they need help with more fire alarms or smoke detectors or the bathroom mold or whatever it might be, you know? Maybe there's programs out there that we could say, hey, you know what? Let's put 200, $300,000 of, of our extra money aside. And let's set a program up that could be similar to a grant program that could say, if you, if you fill out this paperwork, you'd be eligible for X amount of dollars. Maybe it's more insulation. Maybe it's more better windows. Maybe it's uptake on, on the bathroom situation. So I think there's a lot of things we could do, but not everything has to cost a lot of money. I think the inspection department with what they've got now, they've already initiated sending out statements saying, hey, you know what? We'll come in and do an inspection. If you need an inspection done, give us a call. It doesn't cost anything type of thing. So I think there's more notoriety there for that. So I think there's a lot of things that we could be doing, but I don't know until everything kind of comes to fruition. I don't know what direction that's going to take, Sydney. And I don't know if Eric can elaborate on that, but I think I touched on a few things that he and I, David have all talked about.
Yeah. So one, one of the things that is being done, that's an immediate impact. And I think will help impact what future budgets will look like. Is so David Schofield and our chief building inspector, Dave Kowieski, have worked together about, and with the help of Zariah Whitaker, two our communication specialists about updating information for tenants on reporting whether or not they want to have an inspection. So requesting inspections and what their rights are. And that was released last week and right away we had four requests for inspections that came out from it. So just starting by being able to promote the education of it, I do anticipate seeing that an increase. One of the nice thing, well, there's a variety of nice things I think about it is one is that if it's, if we're doing those inspections, we might catch something that, that we need to have changed. So that way it's safer. The other part is too, is then we start understanding what that impact is on how many inspections that they will be doing. So let's say you pass, pass the budget here in November. And then come February, we find out that we went from 50 inspections. Now we're at 150. We're going to need some help. And then that makes sense. But I would hate, I would also be concerned if we decide to add another position and then we don't have those additional inspections. And we don't have an ordinance passed yet. And I think that that's something that will be coming, but we just don't have that just yet.
I just want to clarify, I think another building inspector would be great. I don't know if we have room in the budget. I know Dave from the building inspection team said if we were going to pass that ordinance, he would like more help. Obviously if we can't do that for him, that's fine. I just want to make sure there's enough funds in here for that ordinance to be drafted and brought to this council and that any program with Shield and those funds can be distributed properly. So thank you.
Very good.
Okay, Ed Matt?
Just one last thing about that. We're going to find out more on the November 11th housing committee. But I, I believe there's, might be an alternative and an option to not hire somebody right away and get the majority of what the Shield ordinance has in there. Cause a lot of it's based off of the state statute. I think that's 317. And a lot of that says if you've passed an inspection, that you're good for three years or five years or whatever it is. And that includes the NSET district. So I think it's important that we draft the ordinance, get the ordinance ready and be able to vote on that come November 11th. And we might not be able to have a full-time inspector, even or even a part-time inspector with no benefits right now. But as Randy kind of alluded to that, as the program grows over time, maybe then we can eventually get it and take and see what we need. You know, see if we're getting a lot more inspections and see if we need something there as well. So.
One of the things I would comment on to show where, where working mid-cycle can be successful when adding positions. So you've heard me and the mayor talk about Project Hope before. That was done a mid-budget cycle. That was started in, in March of 2020. They had the unfortunate time of starting the month that the whole state shut down with the pandemic, unfortunately. But it was a case where it was being able to build up and do that once, once we had a plan that was solidified, brought to the council and could be executed. So I, I just want to repeat that this is a possibility to do it. Whether or not we can do this right now, I don't know. We have some budgetary challenges that are faced. But I think that we can do things when it comes to wanting to make sure that we have high quality living. Want to make sure that we're having homes that are inspected and a quality places for people to live. And as far as like having money to, to be able to put in an ordinance, we have funds that are set aside in the budgets for ordinance development.
Riley?
Just for, out of curiosity, for reference, what would we have to budget for an additional assistant building inspector? You said that, you know, a firefighter was approximately $110,000 for, you know, for a firefighter is highly trained, high risk job. I assume, you know, workers comp and everything is a lot more expensive for a firefighter compared to
It is.
A assistant building inspector, but just rough.
Yeah, I can, I can answer that. So assistant building inspector will not, in all likelihood, will not start out as high a cost as a firefighter paramedic. And you hit the nail on the head for some of the reasons on like workers' compensation, just the, the hourly wage, the skillset that's needed for a firefighter medic. Most of the building inspectors that get hired maybe have, have a certification, but a lot don't. And then we have to have them trained. So it takes time for them to get that training. So if they don't have the certifications for, for doing general building inspections to then to the plumbing, to electrical, and I'm sure I'm butchering this. The chief building inspector is probably rolling his eyes at me right now. But it does take time for them to study and take those tests. And then as they pass those, the costs will go up. So once they hit to the point where they are a fully functioning inspector, where they're doing that, that plumbing work, they know the building codes, then you're looking at an expense of about 105 to 110,000 dollars overall. But to hire someone in that new that doesn't have that certification, I think you could say around 90 to 95,000 dollars is the overall expense. So it's a little less than the firefighter paramedic.
And then my other question, so it's been mentioned that, you know, we're approximately $600,000 over budget with our, what we have in front of us. And there's been some question from residences to whether or not that just gets tacked onto our debt or how do we, you know, how does that? Cause my understanding is that the debt is mostly from large projects and not from ongoing operating costs.
Right. It's capital improvements mostly. Yeah. The operating costs, it would be a tax increase. Basically. And we've been fighting tax increases ever since for a long time. But I don't see any other way out this year, particularly with some of the cuts on some of the money coming down from the state and feds. But we don't know exactly until Eric gets the numbers back in a couple of weeks or a week.
It's not like the federal government where we can just say, huh, it'll come from, we'll just print more.
Print more.
Yeah.
I mean, you could try.
On your machine in your basement.
You may have said this and I may have just missed it, but can you translate what a point six mil increase would be on a hundred thousand?
Sure. It'd be six hundred, or sixty dollars on a hundred thousand dollar house.
Okay.
Correct?
That is correct.
All right. I think that we uh, we've got, we're going to bring back the budget in two weeks. And we'll have exact numbers and we can, you know, really dive into it deeper there. We wanted to just give you the overview tonight. Just to keep you kind of in the loop of what's happening. I think we can move on with the rest of our meeting. Uh, good?
I thi- I think we're good unless there are other questions.
Okay, let's keep going. We got a lot of meeting left here tonight. So that being said, we're going to move into five A. The um, consider proposed contract with the Dunn County Humane Society to provide animal shelter related services from January first, two thousand twenty-six to December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six. Eric?
Yes. So we have an annual contract with the Dunn County Humane Society that's based on our per capita. There is a modest increase to that from the previous year. We're going to be paying approximately thirty-six thousand dollars and some odd change for the Dunn County Humane Society. They provided good service through the years. They help us with animal control. And uh, and we're required to have them by, by the state. Otherwise, if we did not have the good services Dunn County Humane Society, we would have to create that ourselves. So for us, it's a, it's a very good deal.
It's the doggone best service in town. Sorry.
It is. In all, in all truth, they do provide a very good service. It's one that's essential and needed. And uh, they've been very good to work with over the years.
Okay. So if anybody wants to support this with a motion, you can do so at this time. Abigail.
I would like to make a motion to approve the animal shelter related agreement with Dunn County Humane Society for the period of January first, twenty twenty-six through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six for the amount of thirty-six thousand, four hundred eighty-seven dollars and sixty-five cents.
Good motion. Thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Lee?
Second the motion.
Most main seconded in discussion.
This is a roll call.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Gents?
Yes.
Silberg?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Yanko?
Yes.
Pickard?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Moving down to five B, proposed ordinance, twenty twenty-five, ten, ordinance rezoning certain lands along Fourth Avenue Northeast from limited multiple residential district R two to multiple residential district R three, discuss possible introduction and possible referral plans condition. So if anybody would like to introduce this, we could do that. Sydney?
I'll introduce proposed ordinance, twenty twenty-five, ten, and ordinance rezoning certain lands along Fourth Avenue Northeast from limited multiple family residential district R two to multiple family residential district R three.
Good job. That was a mouthful. Would you like to also make a motion to pass this along to plan commission?
Yes, I will make a motion to pass what I just said along to the plan commission.
Very good. Is there a second to the uh, passing along to the plan commission? Cody?
I'll second.
Most been made and seconded to pass this along to the plan commission, introduced by Sydney. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, thank you. Uh, going down to five C, proposed ordinance, twenty twenty-five, eleven, and ordinance amending portions of section fourteen, five, two, relating subdivision improvements. Discussion possible introduction and possible referral to plan commission. David Schofield, bring us up to speed, please.
Yes, we have a couple of sections in our code that conflict with each other. Um, in section fourteen dash three dash four, uh, it says that required street improvements uh, include curb and gutter. And in uh, fourteen dash five dash two, um, it says uh, streets shall be graded a full width and shall be surfaced with six inches of crushed gravel and an asphalt seal coat. Uh, I don't think we've done that style of street construction in about fifty years. So I, I would like to update the code to make it uh, these two sections copasthetic. So the um, ordinance, or at least the draft ordinance is before you tonight, um, is to adopt uh, streets will be a minimum of thirty-two feet wide as measured from face of curb to face of curb. Twelve inches of granular sub base, eight inches of crushed aggregate base, three inches of hot mixed asphalt. Uh, and twenty-four foot or twenty-four inch wide mountable or barrier curb and gutter. Um, that would go to plan commission uh, next week and then back to this body, I believe on December first, if introduced and referred.
Anybody, thank you, David. Anybody like to introduce us? Could do so at this time. Matthew?
Yeah, I'll introduce proposed ordinance, twenty twenty-five dash eleven, and ordinance amending portions of title fourteen, chapter five, section two, subdivision regulations, streets and utilities.
Thank you. Would you like to make a motion to pass along to plan commission at the same time?
Yes, I will make a motion to refer proposed ordinance, twenty twenty-five dash eleven, and ordinance amending portions of title fourteen, chapter five, section two, subdivision regulations, streets and utilities to the plan commission for review and recommendation.
Great. If anybody liked to second what he said? Jeff?
I'll second Matt's motion.
Okay, motion been made and seconded to pass this along to plan commission. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, thank you. That brings us down to five D, proposed ordinance, twenty twenty-five, twelve, and ordinance amending portions of section ten, four, seven, off-street parking. Again, David?
Yeah. So our off-street parking code um, is actually in our zoning code for reasons I don't quite understand. Um, and it has a number of requirements in it. Uh, it's not very particular. Uh, for instance, it says the size of the stall, nine foot by eighteen foot. But it doesn't necessarily say that those stalls have to be accessible in any way. So you could theoretically, uh, apartment building, uh, they could put nine parking stalls, uh, triple parked. Uh, and they would meet our parking ordinance as it currently sits. In this, we also, the code currently references uh, a dust-free surface, but doesn't define that. Um, we have been uh, including gravel, uh, asphalt or concrete as a dust-free surface. What I'd like to do in this uh, code is to, is to set it as either asphalt or, or concrete. The last bit that I would like to add is a requirement for it to be curbed. One of the issues that we have on uh, on a number of areas, particularly in, in some of the um, multifamily areas is uh, miraculously parking stalls just appear. Uh, the gravel, the owner uh, buys a load of gravel and adds a little bit more and it, it expands and um, and so by having curbs, it defines where the edge of that parking area is and we don't end up kind of expanding a parking area in the entire backyard of uh, of a converted apartment.
But now there's commercial versus just a homeowner.
Yeah. So driveways are, are not a parking area. So like a, a residential driveway or even a commercial driveway could still be theoretically gravel. This is just the parking areas required by code.
Okay, very good. This one clarity. Ryland?
Um, I guess I have a little bit of a problem with this because my last two previous houses were both, at least when I bought them, they had been rentals and had completely gravel driveways and parking. And it would have been tens of thousands of dollars to put down asphalt or uh, concrete. And if I would have kept the rental permits on those houses, it sounds like I would have probably been required to uh, do a cost prohibitive improvement on the property just to.
So if you were to modify your structure, let's say you were to add a, a, an addition that required additional parking under the ordinance, then you would have had to do under this new ordinance, you would have had to do improvements to that. But if you left, if there was no modifications to that parking area, there was no modifications to the use, then we don't, we don't go back and, and retrofit our new code to our existing areas that we're not touching for, for some other reason. Okay. So if you were to modify and you required initial parking under the code, then you'd have to bring that into compliance.
Okay. So if somebody was to say, add a bedroom onto their uh, rental property.
Yeah. If they had, let's say they went from a two unit to a four unit, then they, they would come into, they'd have to come into compliance with um, all aspects of the code, including off-street parking.
Okay. I think I have the kind of a similar Ryland, and I think I have a similar, similar concerns. And maybe there's another way to work it, but gravel, um, I, you know, I see cars parked on lawns and, and and then things like that. In fact, there's a camper over here, people are living in and it's parked on a lawn next to the house. You know, that's, that's kind of a problematic scenario, but if there's, if there's a gravel base down, I'm, I'm kind of partial to this, the gravel and not have to do concrete. So maybe, I don't know if this needs to be reworked a little bit or if it has due diligence in it. I'm not sure. I'm, I, I'm, I'm along the same lines as David and Ryland on this, so I'm kind of torn. But if anybody else on council have a opinion on this? Jeff, you do. I know you do.
Yeah, I know of a business in North Monami that has a gravel parking spot behind their building. Would that have to be asphalted and concrete with this new ordinance pass?
Not if they didn't modify the structure.
Okay.
But they, but they did a remodel.
Yeah. One other clarification. So we do, we do allow gravel in lay-down yards and trailer parking. Uh, so like at Walmart, for instance, where they have, uh, a lot of times, uh, those uh, parking pads on trailers, they sink into asphalt when it, during the summer, that it gets hot. Then lay down, if you're laying down, you know, bar steel or something like that, you don't necessarily want that on, on asphalt because it would sink in as well. So this is just off-street parking areas, not necessarily every um, drivable surface. This is just the parking areas.
I just, I, I, I have some concerns. And Davey, I know you and I haven't had a deep dive into this, but I think Ryland's question brought me more aware of, of this and Jeff's too. I don't know if we're ready for this to go forward or not, or if it needs to be just tweaked a little bit more. Uh, and I know Davey, I spent a lot of time on this stuff and, and I know how you are. But I, I almost wonder if we shouldn't reevaluate this particular ordinance a little bit further, but um, it's up to council. Sydney?
Sorry, I just have a clarification question. Um, so Jeff, the mayor and Ryland just shared the same concerns about having to go back. This is only, like, can you clarify what this is for in, in a situation where this would be? Because they asked the question and then you gave an answer. And so I assumed that that meant their concern was like, not going to happen under this ordinance, but now I'm confused again.
So this ordinance applies when there's a, a change in use of a property. So if we have, if it's a completely vacant property and someone builds an apartment building on it, they have to comply with this ordinance. If there's an existing use, say a single family and it gets converted to multifamily, that they have to comply with this. So in Ryland's case where he's got an existing structure where he's not changing the use of the property, it's just an existing gravel parking lot. We would not require that parking lot to be uh, gravelled or paved, either asphalt or concrete, because the use isn't changing.
That's what I understood. And so if I go buy a house and it has that, I don't now have to pay thousands of dollars to fix it. Unless I'm like buying a house and turning it into a rental property.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
What? Uh, just secondly, uh, what if uh, for instance, there's a business that operates uh, right now as a hair salon and it switches over and it's going to operate as a used car dealership? I, well, that's not, that's not a good scenario because it has different, but a different business totally. Uh, then they would have to comply with this ordinance.
Are they expanding the building? Most of our, our parking code is based on a number of stalls per square foot of gross floor space, if I recall correctly.
Right.
So if a hair salon turns into a dental office, there's no change in the, in the space used.
But the, but the purpose of the building has changed.
Right. But the, the number of required parking stalls has not changed.
Okay. Lee, you had your kind of.
What about trap rock? There's no dust with trap rock.
There is dust to trap rock. Uh, it just depends on whether it's a washed rock or not, but there is absolutely a blue uh, dust that comes with trap rock.
Well, it was washed.
Uh, this is, this is exactly what I'm trying to avoid because people want to uh, discuss, well, I used uh, wash rock. And then the next guy brings in a load of limestone. So a dust-free surface that's not defined is not a very good thing in the code.
Sydney?
I'm going to move to introduce proposed ordinance, twenty twenty-five, twelve, uh, ordinance amending portions of title ten, chapter four, section seven, off-street parking. And then I will also move to uh, refer the proposed ordinance I just described, twenty twenty-five, twelve to the plan commission for review and recommendation.
Okay. Thank you, Sydney. Is there a second to that motion? Matthew?
I'll second Sydney's motion.
Okay, additional discussion? Okay, it's uh, referred to plan commission. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, thank you. Moving on to five E, proposed ordinance, twenty-five, twenty twenty-five, thirteen, ordinance creating section ten, four, eleven, sight lighting. Uh, David again?
Yeah. So um, Abigail had uh, one of her uh, constituents had some concerns about sight lighting. Um, one of the things that as we were looking through what we could do about that situation, our code has no restrictions on sight lighting in any way, except for in our B four district, which is our neighborhood office district, if I recall correctly. The best uh, scenario or the best example of that is uh, from stepping stones towards culvers. There's some B four on the south side there, maybe on the north side where like Monominee Dental is, that sort of thing. That's the only code section that we have any requirements on sight lighting. I, I think that's unfortunate. I think we should have uh, some requirement, requirements on sight lighting in, in uh, our code for a number of reasons. Um, so what we've prepared here, and I prepared this with uh, Mr. Ludeman's, our attorney Ludeman's assistance, is a sight lighting section to go in um, section four dash eleven, um, that requires a number of things. Uh, the, the big things are that all uh, sight lighting shall be downlit cutoff. So this is downtown, we have what are called acorn style bulbs where the bulb sits on top of the um, the post and it, it throws light in a, in a number of directions. Out, down, up, uh, that sort of a thing. That on a site would not be allowed on this in this, as this ordinance is, if this ordinance is passed. So it requires downlit cutoff lighting. Um, the second bit is that we require a photo, uh, photometric plan so that they can model the impacts of the lighting that they're proposed. And then they cannot exceed uh, one half of a foot candle at uh, ten feet beyond the property line. So um, in the example that Abigail had brought up, there was a complaint about lighting from a building shining on the adjoining properties. This would have a requirement for them to model how the, the uh, lighting was placed on the property and then what impact that would have on the adjoining properties. So um, that would be, that would be another uh, big bit. We have uh, listed a number of exemptions in here. So sight lighting for any lot that is zone four and youth as a single or, or two-family residential. If someone wants to put up a post light in their front yard to get the bugs away from their front door, I don't think it's worthwhile to, to go through and, and regulate that and require them to go get a photometric uh, modeling of their entire yard. Uh, flagpole lighting. Um, so uh, there's a number of, obviously uh, flagpoles are required to be lit if, if the American flag is left uh, up over, overnight. So there's some lighting that has to uh, be on those. Uh, landscape lighting, less than five hundred lumens per fixture. There's uh, some uh, commercial sites will use, you know, they'll have uplighting in the trees or uh, on the face of the building and uh, to highlight some of the shrubbery and that sort of a thing. Uh, street lighting, traffic signals, outdoor sport fields um, would be exempted. Building uh, entrance and exits uh, required by building code, airport lighting and then city-owned uh, security lighting. So this is the recommendation that, that staff have put together. Um, if you so choose, this would go to plan commission because it is in a zoning ordinance and that would come back to you folks on December first.
Okay. Thank you, David. Abigail, uh, pretty excited that uh, you, I went to meet with these people and you beat me to it. And so uh, and they really appreciated you stopping in and talking to them and so forth. And I got a text message today that uh, said that the, I, the matter has been resolved and they're very pleased on um, the city's work for um, towards that better outcome. So congratulations on, good job, well done.
Thanks. It was really exciting. Um, it was an issue that had been bothering them a lot because it was lights shining into their bedrooms at night, which was just, it's hard to sleep and sleep is important. But yeah, no, it was all resolved last week. So they actually stopped by earlier today to say thanks.
Good. Yeah. No, I got a text message too. And so yeah, you beat me to that one. I, I was there and talked to him and and uh, it doesn't really seem to bother them during the day, but nighttime definitely. Anyways, um, that being said, if somebody would like to make a motion to move to plan, plan commission, Sydney, go ahead, please.
Uh, I just have a few comments about this ordinance. Um, I think we should elaborate it more to incorporate certain things such as street lighting, flagpole lighting and so on. Um, we had a resident email of us earlier today and I believe they made a lot of great notes about how if we're already writing the ordinance and spending the time, we should make it more um, elaborate and incorporate all certain things. Um, light pollution is a huge issue that we are seeing nowadays as well as not only the cutoff fixing, but also the like temperament of lighting. Um, so I would like to see an ordinance that discusses multiple facets of this issue.
Yeah, I did see that email. There's a couple of issues that I had with it. The first is they had suggested that we require dark sky certified uh, fixtures. Dark Sky is a, it's a company.
Yeah.
They charge for certification of fixtures. I think it was three thousand dollars and then plus five hundred dollars. They charge for certification of fixtures. I think it was $3,000 and then plus $500 per fixture per year. Um, so I, I have a concern with requiring certification of a, of a commercial business. Um, the second is that, um, the, the temperature, and I know this individual has shared concerns in the past about the temperature of lights. 1800 Kelvin, uh, streetlights are not available. The DOT doesn't allow anything less than 3000 Kelvin. Um, and I believe on our last install, we did 4000 Kelvin. So, um, if at the, when this comes back before this body or at the Plan Commission, if there, if there's a requirement, uh, added to, to go no less than 3000, no more than 3000 Kelvin, that, that's certainly something that could be done. But I would not recommend going to 1800 Kelvin. There's, that's not a common, uh, lighting.
I would agree. I, I saw the, um, I have it pulled up about the dark sky. Um, I guess my, I wasn't saying that we should do everything in this email. It was more saying that if we are going to be addressing sight lighting, that should be like Section 1 and we should have other sections discussing, um, residential zones, streetlights, all that. But, um, I think I would like to make an amend, a motion to amend, or do I have to wait for a Plan Commission? For the 3000 Kelvin? Or do I add that if I make a motion?
I, I think you could make the motion and add the amendment into the motion.
Can.
Correct, David?
Yeah, I think you could probably introduce with 3000 Kelvin being added. And then that's what we would take to Plan Commission.
But the 3000, is that ju- justifiable? I mean, uh, where are we putting 4000 Kelvins in now at streetlights?
We are putting 4000.
So are we gonna have to go, are we gonna be in violation ourselves then?
I, I, I have, in this, we have exempted street lighting. And I would absolutely recommend exempting street lighting. One of the issues that you have with street lighting is some of them are quite tall. Um, and so if you're, uh, like, if you go downtown at the corner of Main and Broadway, that we have some very high poles there. They're probably 35 feet tall. You know, the properties around there are getting more than a half a foot candle off of that street lighting and probably appreciate it because it provides some security for them. Um, we would not be able to meet the other requirements of this code for our street lighting.
Well, should we be more specific then on what lighting deserves what regulation? Because obviously like we're not gonna have a parking lot match street light and meet flagpole. So I'm just adding if it's possible, maybe I'm the only one who thinks this, but if we're tackling the issue, I know other people complain all the time about other lights. Why wouldn't we just not have them all have the same like regulation and restrictions? But address some in each rather than just exempting a bunch of different lighting. I feel like it should all be in the same ordinance.
I think it gets complicated.
I, I would absolutely exempt street lighting from the entire ordinance.
Ryland?
Um, so I know that, uh, one of the concerns that was brought up in the past couple of months with, uh, discussion around a possible data center was outdoor lighting on it. Um, I assume that this ordinance, uh, would address, uh, commercial and industrial lighting so that the neighbors would not be able to read newspapers in their bedroom at, from half a mile away.
Yes. As of right now, if you wanted to put a spotlight on your property, shining on your neighbor's property, it would not violate city ordinance.
Okay.
Now, your neighbor may complain and make some nuisance claims, I don't know, things. But as far as, uh, as far as a, uh, city ordinance goes, that, that would not be a violation. So I'm trying to address that, not necessarily for that specific project. But as we've seen, there are situations where residential properties and R4 and R3 is impacting an R1, um, adjacent to them. So I'm trying to avoid those situations.
Lee, also similar to the driveway and parking, um, this would be only for, um, changes.
Correct.
So like going through the industrial park right now, there's some buildings that are lit up bright as can be 24 hours a day.
So if they, if they were to expand or, or then we would, then we would, this would be triggered on those.
Okay.
Lee?
Yeah, um, just to go back to the street lighting. But I don't know. The majority of the street lighting is provided by XL Energy. So I, you know, I don't think we can control what they put up for their streetlights. So in our reason to exempt it.
Good comment. Okay, we, I want to keep this thing moving forward though. So, um, Gretchen.
Um, I'm thinking of specifically my, my side of town where from, uh, my neighborhood across the meadow, it looks like the, you know, the Astover Terrace is lit up like Close Encounters of the Third Kind at night. Is, is this addressing like 20 lights on the side of an apartment building at all with this?
Yes, the wall, wall packs are included in the, in the.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody want to introduce this and move it on to Plan Commission? If so, we do it now. If not, we're gonna keep moving. Cody.
Uh, I'll introduce Proposed Ordinance 2025-13, an ordinance creating Title 10, Chapter 4, Section 11 Sightlighting. And then I'll make a motion to refer Proposed Ordinance 2025-13 to Plan Commission for Review and Recommendation.
Sydney?
I'll second Cody's motion.
Uh, wait, did you?
The introduction.
You did the introduction and you referred it to Plan Commission. Sydney seconded. Okay, good. Thank you. All right. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Moving on. Consider Statement of Qualifications, uh, for Affordable Housing Development. Uh, Eric, can you start then this one?
Sure, I can, I can start off on that. So, uh, some time ago, we did a, uh, statement of qualification or, uh, put out a request for a statement of qualifications on doing an affordable housing development. That was born out of the Ad Hoc Housing Committee and they came before council for moving it forward. Uh, David Schofield and Company did a good job of putting out the SOQ. We received only one response unfortunately for that on a statement of qualifications. And based on that response and not having input from other groups, staff is recommending not moving forward with this particular statement of qualification, revamping it at some time in 2026 and then going out for other kinds of proposals. So that way we can get more than one to look at. David, do you want to fill in the blanks as well?
Yeah, so I did send it out. I can't recall exactly how many, um, nine or 10, uh, developers in the area. I did talk to a number of the developers that I know that did not, uh, reply. Their main concern was that it included some single family housing. Um, they're not really set up for, uh, that kind of mix. They, they'd actually prefer it to be more multifamily housing. Um, so one of the things that we could talk about next year is do we want to look at, at more multifamily housing? And do we feel strongly that single family housing needs to be included? Um, so there's a number of discussions, but I, I don't, my recommendation is, is to lay this aside at this point because we've got, I don't want to be having one, one contractor that we had gone through this with and then completely changed what we intend on doing. And other contractors feel like they should have had a shot at that, that other, that other project that we now are at. So.
Okay, thank you. Matt?
Uh, yeah, it says in here that they both indicated they prefer to develop multifamily rental units rather than single family homes for sale. So are they looking at developing rental units to make more money off of the development? Or they just, you know, have the capacity to do more multifamily instead of single family? Or what's, what's kind of the big?
So I'll, I'll use an example. Uh, one of the firms was SC Soderzky. They're doing the, the large, uh, development on the west side of Oakley or out near the Menards, um, distribution facility. They don't do a lot of single family developments. They do a lot of multifamily developments and then rent. They have, they have affordable options. Obviously, this is, they're, uh, not everyone does super high end residential rentals. Um, but they just weren't interested in doing single family.
I think it's important to keep, uh, affordable housing on the radar and making sure we're developing affordable housing. We've done some rentals with the 503, you know, Broadway and the Astover Terrace and all that. I think we need, uh, some affordable housing in, in Menominee to focus on that single family housing as well. It's, it's fine if you have some mix and have some, you know, multifamily as well, but, uh, or some townhouses. But I'd rather, I'd rather see housing in there, not just, just rentals.
Gretchen?
Um, and I, and I'm, this is my ignorance of the, of the market, but is, is there any possibility of going further afield with regards to the developers? Um, and, um, because single family housing, there are some specialty, you know, developers that can do sustainable development or have, um, some alternate, you know, materials and whatnot that, but I'm guessing that the general, you know, contractors and whatnot in this area might not have that expertise. Did you expand? Can we expand?
So we, we did publish this in the newspaper and I sent it to the 10. Um, I, I will note that in the one, the one proposal we got that included CNM Homes, they were looking at what's called a, they called it a cross mod. It was a, uh, modular building to reduce costs. Um, and so I, I do think there are ways, there's certainly there are ways that single family can be affordable. Um, maybe not as affordable as it was 15 or 20 years ago, but it, there are ways that you can make it affordable. Uh, and they were, they were going to do that. They were proposing to do that.
Are there, are there companies though that might be further away? That might have this capability and might be interested and they just didn't, weren't aware of it? Is there a way to advertise further?
There's certainly possible that we could, we could spread it wider than we did.
Okay, um, Sydney?
I just want to say that when we're doing this, especially since one of, um, we have that Affordable Housing Fund that we really need to make sure that this stays affordable and it isn't just, as Matt said, another rental unit. I just want to really make that in front of us and highlight it.
Okay, I really want to keep this meeting moving. If anybody wants to, um, deny this particular one, that would be the start. And then we can go forward and request other proposals in the future. So with that being said, Jeff?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to reject the Affordable Housing Development Statement of Qualification.
Okay, Ryland?
I'll second Jeff's motion.
Okay, most made and seconded. Um, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. Oh, oh wait, all opposed, raise your hand. Sydney, Matthew?
Got it.
Thank you. Moving on. Next, uh, 5G, Consider Special Event Request, Winter Days Parade on 10th Avenue East, South Broadway Street, Main Street East and Fourth Street East on December 11th, 2025. Pretty excited. Becky, Becca was here tonight and, and brought this forward. Um, I think it's a, a great wintertime parade. It's been well received. Eric, do you want to touch on this a little bit?
Well, I know people know that I don't particularly care for Christmas. Okay, that's, that's a bold faced lie. I've been listening to Christmas music since September. So, uh, yeah, I'm weird. I'm one of those people. Sorry. So Winter Days has been a great, great event. City has participated with Main Street and Downtown Menominee and enjoyed a great partnership. Downtown does a fabulous job with all the volunteers and partners to make a great parade in an event with strongly urge supporting it. It's just a fantastic way to get out and enjoy the holiday.
Great. And I just want to touch base. Becca said that it starts on December 11th, 4 o'clock and the parade starts at 6:30. So, and the parade route, um, same as last year, same, same direction?
Yep. So we, in the past, it's been counterclockwise. Last year, we made the change to, uh, clockwise. I don't believe that was the cause of the, you know, negative windshield, but, um, well, I guess we'll see this year.
Lot of fun. So if anybody'd like to support this with a motion, you can do so at this time. Matt?
Yeah, I make a motion to approve the special event permit for the Winter Days Parade on 10th Avenue East, South Broadway East, Main Street East and Fourth Avenue East on December 11th, 2025 as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Abigail?
I'll second Matt's motion.
Most made and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Budget transfers, none this evening. Brings us down to the mayor's report. Um, a couple of little things. One is, tonight I have a proclamation tonight. Um, City of Menominee, Wisconsin, mayoral proclamation for the James Huff Stout Remembrance Day. And I'll just read some of the whereas. Whereas James Huff Stout, 1848 to 1910, was a Wisconsin legislator, philanthropist and visionary whose leadership and generosity transformed the city of Menominee. And it goes, there's, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, whereas. And then there is a now, therefore, I, Randy Connect, Mayor of the City of Menominee, Wisconsin, do hereby proclaim December 8th, 2025 and each year thereafter as James Huff Stout Remembrance Day. Um, in the city of Menominee, I encourage all citizens to join in honoring the life, legacy and lasting impact, James Huff Stout, a man whose vision continues to illuminate our community. So anyways, I just wanted to bring that forward. Uh, the city council members have a copy of it and we will post this also out there for others to view. So thank you. That was that. Moving on to, um, just the mayor's report itself. We, the volunteer group came down and helped, uh, get the lights and figurines all set up, the decorations at Wolfski's Bay. It's not all done. Got another, mm, 10,000 feet of lights to put up or so. So if anybody wants to string some lights in some trees and hang on some ladders and tip upside down, uh, come on down. But, um, it was a little bit windy on Saturday and Sunday. Sunday was really windy to be up, um, trying to decorate the trees. But it's, it's on the way. The one thing we thought about doing, it'd be fun to open up some of the middle areas of it. So if a business wanted to set up some light displays in the middle sections, uh, there's plenty of room. So I'd like to open that up for, um, the possibility if, if you have a business or organization and you'd like to put up some lights or a display down there, uh, just get ahold of either myself, David or, or Eric and we can coordinate that. Uh, you could put them up and then you could take them down. It would help us all out. So, um, so I think some of the major businesses, um, you know, or, or organizations might be very interested in that. Uh, I'm gonna leave it with that. Uh, I'm gonna go around the room. Eric?
I don't have anything. I think I've talked enough.
Oh, yeah. How about anything? Kate?
Uh, well, gearing up for election season, it's coming. And so any, um, words you can put out there to the community for poll workers, we're looking for fresh blood. So.
Don't say it like that. We're looking for qualified, great people to be poll workers. Lee, Abigail, Gretchen?
Uh, yes, um, I would like to put in a call. It's just been, numerous folks have commented about, um, my, my part of town, there's a lot of folks traveling to Stout, uh, and on those roads and with the darkness, with the ATVs and just, uh, a lot of near misses that are not reported accidents because they're near misses of people. Um, I'm requesting that we have at least a two-way stop on 7th Street East and 14th Avenue East, right by the senior center there. Um, there's a.
One more time, 7th Street East?
So it's 7th Street East and 14th Avenue East. Um, that's in the, all of 14th Avenue from Dix to the senior center is uncontrolled at the moment. And it just, 7th and 14th, there's just numerous things happen.
Okay.
Um, there and just it, we, we need something and just, uh, all those uncontrolled intersections in there are a little, you know, unique to town because of the amount of traffic that's going through there at different times of day.
Okay, we'll get Mr. Schofield looking into that. Thank you. Uh, Eric, Matthew?
Uh, just the next housing meeting, I believe, is November 11th, Tuesday at, uh, 5 o'clock here.
Hey, Jeffrey, Jeffrey, Mr. Luther, Randy, nope, Ryland?
Um, yeah, I guess I would, uh, really like to see the shield ordinance on a future agenda soon. Cause while I appreciate that Dave's gotten four inspection calls, uh, for rentals, I've talked to a handful of tenants that have had their landlords say, if you call the building inspector, we will evict you. Um, and even though that's illegal, they, they feel that threat from their landlord. Um, and they're dealing with, uh, plaster falling off the ceiling onto their, in their kitchens and their bedrooms and their kids' bedrooms. Uh, you know, I sent Dave to one that, uh, their landlord was not impressed at all with where water was literally coming through their electrical panel, um, after their landlord had been notified numerous times. Um, you know, the, the, uh, having gotten, looked over the draft ordinance, um, it offers protections for tenants that, um, they need because their landlords know that, um, you know, if they make even empty threats, that it'll shut up tenants. Um, and so, um, I've, I've been in countless rentals that are unsafe where, where the exterior doors don't all close all the way. Um, and. exterior doors don't all close all the way. Um, and landlords just ignore it. Toilets falling through the floor because the landlords won't show up and fix stuff. So I would really like to see this on the agenda.
Okay, we're, we're, we're working on. I know it's being worked on. So.
I'd like a plan.
It's, it's, it's moving. So, all right, Sydney?
Yeah, I just have a few words for tonight. Um, I've just been very deeply troubled and quite frankly upset about how this governing body is honestly just failing our residents right now. We've had so many residents and for good reason, expressed deep frustration that they're upset and angry at this governing body. They've reached out to us as a full council, as individual alderpersons, to our city staff, to our mayor, our administrative team and so on. And we have not adjusted our behavior or actions in the slightest. This is like really deeply concerning. I'm aware of the issue. The data center has been paused by the mayor. What I, as well as many other residents are not aware of what this pause means and where it's going to go. Additionally, I have many issues with not only the timeframe of this pause, but also that is currently being upheld and decided unilaterally by our mayor. Since this vote on annexation and rezone have come upon us, the largest complaint I've personally heard is that there's not enough information going out to the public. At this time, I completely agree. There have only been one frequently asked questions and one press release has gone up from this city. That is just completely ridiculous. Our residents and our council are having to piece all this information ourselves. And I am incredibly grateful and thankful for the information being shared on social media with the staff, the data center group. And I am deeply frustrated that that is even necessary and residents are having to do it themselves. We as a city should be giving updates and full communication right now by the mayor and his staff about where this project is and what a pause means. I'm not going to take a moment and read a letter I received from a resident. I'll be reading, I will be leaving the author anonymous for privacy readings. Quote, to city council member Sydney Brennan, I'm writing as a concerned resident of Dunn County to express my very strong opposition to the proposal to allow a data center in our county. I believe that the risks and long-term costs of hosting such a facility outweigh any short-term gains. Data centers are among the largest industrial consumer of both electricity and water. Large data centers often bring noise pollution, cooling systems, traffic from construction operations and potential air quality issues from backup generators. These effects would directly impact the well-being and quality of life for nearby residents and beyond. Menominee has opportunities to attract industries that create sustainable, good-paying jobs while respecting the environment and the people. We should prioritize investments that strengthen our community without compromising natural resources or quality of life. For these reasons, I expectantly urge the city council to reject the proposal to place a data center near Menominee and instead pursue development opportunities that align with our long-term community values and sustainability goals. Thank you for your time, service and consideration of the residents you represent. End quote. I share this with all you today because I feel like a majority of our residents are feeling that exact way. We're not anti-growth, but we don't know and we will not know because we have no new information coming out. We have no proper communication channels or any way that we're speaking with our residents about what this project means. It has been made very clear that it's time to prioritize investments that strengthen our community. And with the lack of information that is being shared to not only this council, but more importantly to our public, we are unable to dissect if a data center would be a proper investment or not. Therefore, we should be wise and go with the latter that no, it would not be good for the city of Menominee. As the letter said, there are huge public health impacts that a data center may cause. Therefore, I am requesting that this body take a clear lawful step to protect public health and ask the mayor to put on the agenda for December, a discussion for a time-limited developed moratorium on new data centers while we complete the studies and standards this used demands. This would mean that our city, rather than just our mayor and his staff alone, are finding information and talking to our residents and having information be made public, not just in that office. We have legal statute that this is allowed and it goes into situations just as our own. It's under Wisconsin statute 66 dot 1002 and states the city may enact a development moratorium for a defined period after a public hearing and stated findings when additional time is needed to address the problem giving rise to the moratorium. The statute caps the duration and requires a transparency. It is designed for exactly the situation. Our findings must be grounded in public health and transparency. Wisconsin land use controls must be reasonable related to protecting the public health, safety and our general welfare. Data centers by their nature raise health-relevant externalities that we have not yet publicly evaluated for Menominee, including very large electric loads that can drive diesel generated reliance during outages, continuous noise from mechanical systems, extremely high water use that can stress supply and treatment systems. These are classic public health concerns that justify a temporary pause and a legal one while we study and as a public, not just our administrative team and mayor set the standards. To be explicit, I'm going to give you four steps that I'm asking staff to notice a public hearing and bring back an ordinance with the following. One, air quality and emergency power. Two, chronic noise exposure. Three, water supplies and wastewater capacity. And four, grid reliability and community exposure. My request tonight is that we place this in December, on our first of the month, December meeting, to give the 30 days needed for a public hearing for, quote, discussion and possible action on 12-month development moratorium on new approvals for A, data centers and B, very large warehouses over defined thresholds pursuant to Wisconsin state statute 66 dot 1002, including draft findings tracking the four public health items I listed in a notice public hearing date. This is not an anti-growth statement. It is a public health due diligence statement. We have a duty to ensure that any project of this scale can meet strong transparent standards without shifting environmental or health risk onto residents. A lawful, not unilateral, time-limited moratorium or legal pause, as I like to call it, gives us a space to do that work openly with public input and on the record. Thank you.
Mary?
I'll turn to my. The only thing I'm going to add is that I, I am extremely disappointed and frustrated at the viciousness and the condescending how we as a council are wrong and what do we know? And because everybody else knows better, you, you want to read some of the, the, the postings on Facebook and elsewhere. It's vicious and I am extremely disappointed by that. We are doing the best we can, in my opinion. And I, I just want to say that the calls I have taken, the responses that I have given to people that are beyond vicious and name-calling and vitriol, I, I'm just appalled by a lot of it. I thought that as a community, we had a better, better heart than that. And that's it. Thank you.
Cody?
Um, yeah, I'll just add that I do think it's probably worth our time to pursue a formal moratorium. So I just want to second that request.
Okay, Ben? Okay. I'm just going to say one thing and, and I'm going to echo a lot of what Mary said. You have no idea the calls that I get or how it is to go into a grocery store or a fleet farm, or my wife goes and waits in the car while I deal with an unhappy person. However, that's just only one aspect. The other day, more than once, I got a fellow that was threatening because of our cops, because he got arrested when he shouldn't have. Or persons upset because of this or that. And it has nothing to do with anything that a council member did or the mayor did. It's the neighbor and how come I'm not dealing with the neighbor across the street? So you all might think that being the mayor is, oh, it's setting the budget or it's dealing with this issue or that issue. But Mary kind of hit, hit the nail on the head a little bit. There's a lot more that I deal with than just what it appears to be. And a lot of it is dealing with people that are upset or people that have issues. And it may not be an issue with me. It may be an issue with their neighbor. It may be an issue because the leaves are falling off the trees. I don't know. But we do deal with it the best we can. And we do have an open policy, open door policy. If anybody ever, I don't care if they're a community member, a city council member, anybody at any time can always come in and see us or I will meet you at McDonald's or Perkins or anyplace else. I don't have a problem with that. We are a cohesive bunch. We need to remain cohesive. We have a ability to agree to disagree. That's okay. And, but we do treat each other with respect and I try my best to, to always treat others with respect. I know that Eric and I will get into a discussion and say, okay, now let's go have a beer after I'm right. But we don't, I don't always win every argument or every discussion, I should say. Dave and I have discussions. It's okay. Uh, we, Lee and I have discussions. I mean, I can go around this room and we've all had some discussions where we don't always agree with each other. That's okay. But you know what? We're all in this together. We're all to make Menominee better. And whatever we have to do to make Menominee better, I'm thumbs up. And if that's helping the shield folks out, the girl folks out, thumbs up. If that's helping out economic, affordable housing, thumbs up. If it's to help out our chief of police who's got, you know, a plethora of situations throughout Menominee, I'm all for it. If, if Dave back there wants to get something done at the city shop and some new equipment, man, if I can help him, absolutely. If the fire chief comes forward and says, by golly, we need three new firefighters, we could lose the entire staff because we're overworking them. Well, we have to do something about that. And that's where you all play a huge role in making Menominee better. So I, I, I don't have any gripes about anybody. I just want to make it better for everybody. And with that being said, I'm going to move on to claims. We have a revised claims list in front of us. If anyone wants to make a motion to pass that, we can do that at this time. Sydney?
Yeah, I'll make the, a motion to approve the claims list as presented. I just want to also note just how expensive our legal fees and consulting services have gotten. And I know I asked about that last meeting and Eric said it was because of open records requests. And I do believe we are costing taxpayers a lot of money because we as a governing body, we're not transparent about a data center coming here.
Sydney, for your motion, it's the revised claims list, correct?
Yes, the revised claims. Thank you.
Okay, is there a second to that? Ryland?
I'll second Sydney's, Sydney's motion.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Solberg?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Sommerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Crow?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Yanko?
Yes.
Pickard?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Gents?
Yes.
Thank you. Our normal license list as presented. If anybody would like to make a motion to pass that, Ryland?
Yes, I'd make a motion to approve the normal license list as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second to that? Mary?
I will second Ryland's motion.
Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? Nope. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And then of course, the very last thing we have tonight is a motion to adjourn. I'm going to go around the room. Cody?
I'll move to adjourn.
Is there a second to that motion? Abigail? Motion been made by Cody and seconded by Abigail. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.